Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February 6, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call a roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Resika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated.
We will start out as we always do with our public to be heard. And clerk, if you'll read our rules and regulations. At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern-only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. Issues involving specific employees of the city should be directed to the city manager outside of the meeting, and all speakers before council will observe commonly-accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone deserving to be heard? Please.
Sure.
Hello. My name is Dan Hurling, and I reside at 250 East Genesee Street, Auburn, New York. Currently, the hottest real estate market in New York is represented by my 36% increase in assessment from last year. That's about a negative 4.4 decibel gain. That's getting pretty hot. I would like to bring to the attention of the council that it appears the Board of Assessment Review is currently not in compliance with the Charter of the City of Auburn of New York. Article 4, Section 40, Paragraph B reads as follows: "Board of Assessment Review: There shall be a Board of Assessment Review consisting of five members who shall be appointed and shall have all the powers and duties prescribed by the real property tax law. As you can see, the Charter specifically calls for five members, and I believe we currently only have three members. I know there were only three members last year. I believe that is especially important during a revaluation year when many citizens feel their assessments are not equitable, um, sorry, that we comply with the city charter. Furthermore, I believe that in order for the city charter to be modified, a referendum on qualified electors of the City of Auburn would have to be held in order to be compliant with New York State Municipal Home Rule Law 24, local law subject to referendum on petition. Specifically, Paragraph 2. Except as otherwise provided by or under the authority of a state statute, a local law shall be subject to referendum on petition if it, Item C, changes or provision of law relating to assessment of real property or benefit assessment for local improvements." At this point, the only option that I see for the city is to approve two additional members to the bar. I personally would like to see a more diverse board so the citizens of this great city can be equally represented. At a minimum, it would be nice to see some women on the board. It is intimidating enough to present and defend yourself in front of a board of peers. I can only imagine what it feels like for a woman to go against, go up against a bar consisting all of males, or any other minority for that matter. Lastly, some of you may have recognized my name as I have recently submitted a series of FOIL requests. I would like to thank you upfront, I would like to thank upfront all those responsible for fulfilling my request. I know some of my requests may seem silly, but I assure you they are not. I am currently one of the citizens that feel their assessment is not equitable, and all of my requests serve a crucial role in proving that fact. I would never make a request merely to create work for someone. That is not the kind of person I am, so I ask you to please bear with me through this process. I believe my current requests are sufficient to prove my case. However, I may have follow-up requests pending the results of my first series. Thank you again for your effort. This concludes my thought for the night. Thank you to the City Council, Mayor, and entire City Health team for taking my comments and thoughts into consideration. Best regards, Dan Hurling, lifelong resident. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else deserving to be heard this evening?
Good evening. Ron Quill, 5K Avenue, also the Board Chairman for Salvation Army in Auburn. Many times you hear me appeal for things for Salvation Army. Once again, I want to appeal for the food pantry. Remind everybody that we've got five pantries here in the city trying to support and help people that run short as far as their food supplies and so on and so forth. With the economy the way it is, people are hurting, and especially this time of year when it's cold and miserable out there like it has been, seems like forever now. But they really do appreciate the extra, the extra things that you can supply. Non-perishable items will be accepted at any one of the pantries. And if there's any questions, if you need to find out where the pantry is other than the Salvation Army at 18 East Genesee Street, you can call our number at the Salvation Army between 8 o'clock and 4 o'clock in the afternoon. They'll be glad to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quill. Anyone else deserving to be heard? No one else? We'll close that portion of our meeting. Mr. Hurling, just for your information, I don't know if you're familiar, but we're not allowed to debate you or question anything in regard, okay. All right, and I know staff will be working on your question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approval of meeting minutes. We'll start out with December 23, 2000, that should be 13. I think that's a typo. Counselor McCormick?
Before you start out with the 23rd, the 19th, I've discovered it's not in your list. There's an error on the ones that were approved for the 19th. And I've talked with the clerk. It's to do with the vote for the, I can't think of the number, Resolution Number 139.
139, yeah.
It should have the mayor as voting no, and I had him down as yes.
I've got those.
Just wanted to bring that up for him.
I do have the corrected copy if the council wanted to entertain those tonight, proving those corrected.
Are they amended?
Yeah. I could pass them out there.
Is that agreeable, council?
Yes.
I've got an extra if you're short.
All right. Counsel, with your permission, I'd like to, I'd like to go back to the December 23 meeting and then put December 19th at the bottom of the list, if that's, unless someone has an objection. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 23 meeting. The response, Counsel Camardo, seconded by Counsel Resika. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Motion to approve the minutes from Monday, December 23, 2013, City Council meeting. Counselor McCormick?
Stain.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Stain.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill? Aye.
Carried.
Minutes of January 9, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Auburn City Council meeting of January 9, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye.
Carried.
Motion for January 16 of 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counsel Camardo. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Auburn City Council of Thursday, January 16, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye. Motion for January 23 of 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counsel Camardo. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Motion to approve the City Council minutes of Thursday, January 23, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye. Minutes of January 30, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel McCormick. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Minutes of the Auburn City Council meeting for Thursday, January 30, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye. And then a motion for the minutes of December 19, 2013, as amended. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel Resika. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Auburn City Council meeting minutes from Thursday, December 19, 2013, amended. Counselor McCormick?
Stain.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Stain.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Aye. Let's not back these up again. It's, it gets kind of confusing in the end. That's your charge, mister.
Well, just got to get them right the first time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Presentations and proclamations?
Yes. Mayor, Mayor Quill has asked me to read a letter that he received from the Police Chief of the Town of Camillus Police Department dated February 4, 2014. Dear Mayor Quill, On Saturday morning, January 25, 2014, I was traveling through the City of Auburn to Ithaca, New York to attend my son's hockey game. While driving on South Street in the middle of downtown Auburn, I came across an accident scene that was properly secured by members of the Auburn Police Department. Upon approaching this accident closer, I noticed one of the two cars involved in this personal injury accident belonged to a mom of one of my son's teammates. I pulled my personally-owned vehicle to a safe location and approached the scene on foot to check her. I was promptly and professionally greeted by a member of the Auburn Fire Department. I explained to him what my connection was with the driver of one of the vehicles, and he immediately, without hesitation, offered his assistance. I was then led to the TLC Emergency Ambulance that was treating her. The crew on the TLC ambulance could not have been more accommodating. They invited me into the back of the ambulance so I could check on my friend. They were nothing but professional, caring, and polite as they provided care for the patient while at the same time answering my questions. This allowed me to obtain the proper information needed so I could call her husband and let him know what had occurred. Mayor Quill, you and the members of the city government should in fact be very proud of all the emergency service personnel who serve the residents of the City of Auburn. My chance encounter with the Auburn Police, Auburn Fire Department, and specifically TLC Emergency Medical Services was truly a positive experience. I wish to thank you for providing such fine services in your community. Sincerely, Thomas M. Nguyen, Chief of Police for the Town of Camillus, New York.
Council, you've all received that in an email, as well as the Police Chief, Fire Chief, TLC, and I believe Mr. Selby also received a copy, so it's nice to get a letter like that once in a while, so. Anything else?
Nothing.
Public announcements?
No.
Counsel Camardo?
Mayor, and members of council, and ladies and gentlemen, for over 30 years, my father, Professor Camardo, and the Attained Heritage Society has been very instrumental in bringing military bands to the, to the community. And it's a great honor and a privilege to, once again, let everybody know that Master Sergeant David Bullman of the Department of Army has recently contacted myself and the Attained Heritage Society, and we graciously accepted to sponsor a concert on March 22, which is a Saturday night, 7:00 PM at Auburn Junior High School, which is East Middle School. The United States Army Field Band and Soldiers' Chorus will be here in the community. There'll be 102 people, members of the Army, that'll be here that night. Outstanding members of our military, very professional people that will perform here in our community. We invite everybody to participate. Following protocol of the military, they ask that a self-addressed stamped envelope be sent for tickets, and I'll give you that information. It'll be sent to the Attained Heritage Society in care of John Camardo, 206 Genesee Street, and we will promptly get tickets out to you for that evening. There'll be 102 people attending the concert. They'll be lodging here in the community that night, so it'll be a little bit of a stimulus for our, for our economy. And we invite you to join us. It'll be an excellent evening. Once again, that'll be March 22, which is a Saturday night at 7:00 PM. Auburn Junior High School, which is East Middle, I know sometimes there's some confusion in that, but on Franklin Street, and everybody is welcome, and it is a free concert. It's the United States Army Field Band and Soldiers' Chorus. There's 65 people in the Soldiers' Chorus alone, so we're looking forward to having a great night and having everybody join us, so please participate, and I'd be happy to accommodate any tickets that anybody wants to get for that evening. The military is very strict in making sure that tickets are sent out to individuals so that it's just not, so they have a count of the number of people that are attending that, that evening. So, once again, join us, March 22 at 7:00 PM, Auburn Junior High School, Saturday night. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. City Managers' Report?
Just one item, Mayor. The permitting software that the Code Enforcement Department has ordered, and thanks to the council's approval of that, is scheduled to go live in May. Right now, the data is being loaded into the system, and it's, staff is working with the viewpoint people to get that system up and running. For those who haven't heard about this, this is an effort to get a lot of our paper process that's now requiring people to come to a counter online so that 24/7 people can apply for permits, who also facilitate reducing paperwork within the city to speed up the issuance of permits, scheduling of inspections, the issuance of certificates of occupancy. So we're looking forward to that, and I thought just give you a status report on that because we haven't talked about it for a while. Related to that, too, we've chartered a technology team. As the city is looking to be more efficient operationally, a lot of ideas have come forward, including the E-A agenda that we now have, the view permitting software, some GIS-based applications, geographic information system-based applications, and a lot of departments are coming up with ideas as to how to put this information into the field to help customer service and to improve the efficiency of our staff. So we, rather than let a bunch of independent efforts happen, we are consolidating that into one operational group who's going to meet, I think, every two weeks for a while and try to basically look at how we can coordinate all these efforts, making sure that the hardware that we get is as uniform as possible so it's easier to support, as well as using the software that we've already got investments in that utilizes base maps from the geographic information systems. So we'll watch for products coming out of that effort. I've seen a new map of vacant buildings already, thanks to one of the people who's trained in this area, so hopefully that will help us be more efficient and effective. So just wanted to give everybody an update on that, and that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Secret Resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Ordinances?
No ordinances.
Financial Resolution Number 23 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2013-14 budget for transfer to sewer revolving loan fund. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counsel Resika.
Financial Resolution Number 23 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2013-2014 budget for a transfer to the sewer revolving loan fund. Whereas the sewer revolving loan fund is a city-funded program to assist city property owners with the repair and/or replacement of sewer laterals, and whereas there has been significant increase in request for funding assistance towards the repair and replacement of sewer laterals within the city, and the sewer revolving loan fund has become depleted and is no longer able to loan funds for new sewer lateral repair projects. And whereas a transfer of $200,000 from the sewer fund balance is necessary to address the current $84,000, $80, and 11 cent fund deficit, and to provide capital to loan for new projects for the remainder of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the Auburn City Council does authorize a transfer of $200,000, decreasing the sewer fund, unreserved fund balance account number G909 in the amount of $200,000, and increasing the sewer fund revolving loan account number HG99.503.003 in the amount of $200,000. Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Mr. Selby, could you just, for the folks at home, just break this down a little bit?
Okay. This is a loan program that the city has instituted to help homeowners who have problems with their sewer laterals. It's a loan that's secured by property taxes. It allows a fairly easy mechanism to get the money to do these repairs, which are frequently very expensive, and it's been a very popular program. Initially, we're loaning about $60,000 a year. Now it's up to around $120,000 a year. It's, basically, we've overloaned money beyond that, which has been repaid, so we want to recapitalize the program and use some of the sewer fund balance to do so.
Counsel Resika?
Yes, one of my recap items was just to look at these bills that were submitted and examine them because, just as today, I got a call from a constituent who got a call, a quote for a repair from one particular contractor, which I understand has been primarily doing these, these repairs. And his bid was, I'm going to say on the order of mega to 10K. He obtained another bid and got it for a little under 4K from another contractor. So that being said, I'd like to see, and I'm going to do it under other businesses, I'd like to have us put together a resolution that said if we're going to use these in funds that the individuals have to get three bids so that we have an even playing field. We're not having one individual getting all the contracts and gouging. Because that's exactly what I think has happened on this account.
We, as staff, have shared that concern, and we've actually been looking into that. John, do you want to say a little bit?
Yes. We've had some preliminary discussions, and we're meeting with the Plumbing Board next Tuesday. The thoughts are the mechanism that we can use to protect the homeowners and to reduce the cost if possible. If the city is now advancing funds, I believe that we have an interest in examining the bids that come in, and dependent upon our meeting with the Plumbing Board, we will come back with recommendations. And it may be that we will access three bids. Sometimes the immediacy of the moment might not allow that. And also, we have been servicing both residential and commercial properties. Whether or not that is something we should keep doing, we have to examine the criteria, and I would think that we would want to look at an overhaul of the process and the criteria for granting these loans. So I would ask you to hold off on requesting a resolution this quickly. We would like to go back and come back with recommendations from the industry staff and to look at the entire program and probably revamp the requirements so that it's going to be equitable, not only for the homeowners, but also for the city in granting these funds. I would say that, and hope that we would have something definitive for you within the next couple of weeks as a report.
I really think, like I say, this is, this is something that we're offering the public and in order to make it available to as many people as we possibly can, that we need to, I'm going to say, help control the costs here. I think a minimum of three bids will give any homeowner a reasonable, good stake in the ground and a point of reference as to what it should be costing.
Counsel Camardo?
Mayor, thank you. I know this is, this is an excellent tool for the members of our community to access, to try to get help when they have a problem with a, problem with a sewer line, or I know, do we do it for water, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do it for water also, so it's, it's an excellent program, but I think we need to look into to make sure that we have a standardized system across the board to treat everybody fairly. I know other communities do, I think they put like a per-foot cost that's allowable that they look at doing, whether it be running a backhoe or whether it costs how much the city would pay to do that or advance to do that. I think these are some of the things we need to look into. Also, about a year ago, I asked that, I know years ago, the city would bring the sewer line from the lateral or from the main to the property, you know, to the property of the homeowner. We got away from that, unfortunately, because of costs. I'd also like to look into what it would cost the city to undertake that, taking it from the main to the property line. I know we got a lot of people working in our streets, and we need to have something uniform out there so that proper patching gets done, and we don't have these constant problems in our streets that we have many contractors out there doing the work, and the work hasn't been done, leaving potholes in streets that are having a lot of problems with them. So it's, I've been advancing a lot of costs to our taxpayers to fix these streets, and I think we need to stay on top of this. But I also would like to see the, how we did it years ago when we had, went from the main to the property line with the sewer lateral. I believe we do that for water now, don't we? For the water lateral goes from the main to the property line? The city staff does that?
Yeah, it's the same as the sewer.
We do it, but we charge. The contractor goes out with the sewer, though.
No, it's charged, though.
We charge for that.
Yeah, and it's, right now, the quote states that the property owner is responsible from the main to both the water and the sewer.
Right. I'm talking about, years ago, we went from the main to the property line. It was the city's responsibility to do that. And then the resident would take it from their property line into their property or their building. That's why I'd like to look into how we did it years ago. So that we have a uniform standard about who's working in the street, how the work's conducted, and so on and so forth.
We're going to take a look at all of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? My only concern, Counsel Resika, believe it or not, I'd agree 100% with you. My concern, though, is if it's an emergency situation where the sewer line is, is broken or whatever, and it's, you know, it becomes a health hazard. So I, Mr. Ross, I would suggest or request that you look at that. If it's an emergency situation, what could or couldn't be done in that regard, so.
We've discussed that internally, and I think the folks on the Plumbing Board could give us some insight on that.
Well, then, what I would suggest is that, that we make it a competitive bid for anybody that's licensed in the city to do that service, so that we have someone on call that'll react for those emergencies, and it will be competitively bid.
Counsel Cuddy?
Also, I guess, if the Plumbing Board is willing to propose like a scale that, that people in, with this need could, could at least see a frame or a scale in which this kind of work is done so that they're not blindsided by like a $10,000 bid. So maybe, you know, propose to the Plumbing Board, you know, what would be the range in which something like this would happen for the sewer?
I think part of the issue is, depends on how deep the excavation has to be. It may be probably not uniform throughout the city. So you may be able to go down six feet at one property, then maybe 10 feet at another. But we're going to discuss all of that. We'll come back with the recommendations.
The other thing that makes sewer laterals more complicated is they have to flow by gravity, whereas our water laterals can kind of weave them in and out of other utilities, so have to have a clear shot and a proper grade.
Well, there are pumping stations, though, in the city for sewage.
Not from the home?
Not from the home.
No, I mean, where the laterals eventually flow to, like out on Grand Ave, there's one, there's a, that pumps up.
That's why I would recommend, I think the City of Syracuse does it. They give you so much per hour for machine, how deep you're going. There's all stipulations that are laid out and what the municipality will pay for. So I think those are the things that would achieve the emergency situation, but everything's spelled out in black and white.
Mr. Ross, are we looking into water lines, too, did you say?
Not right now, Your Honor. That fund is still, well, got enough money in it right now.
Okay.
But, you know, there are issues when these water laterals- But, you know, there are issues when these water laterals are repaired because many of them are ancient, and it costs more money. And the homeowners do complain about that cost, but we'll look at all of it.
Yeah. And that leads me to my next statement. A family member was advised that their water meter was to be replaced. And the plumbing, it was old and was dilapidated. And the plumber, local plumber, gave them a cost estimate. And the owner, a family member hemmed it hard, and the plumber cut it in half, you know, within a matter, without even leaving the home or anything. So my point being, we have to keep an eye, if we're going to look at sewer, I think we should be looking at water to the same thing.
I think both of them should be looked at, especially if we're lending the money. I think we should have some oversight on it.
Yeah, we don't need two occupancies draining the $200,000 to expand.
Exactly. We want to stretch it as much as possible for everybody to participate in it.
Absolutely.
No further discussion. If you call the roll, please.
Yep. Motion to approve financial resolution number 23. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Aye.
Carried.
Financial resolution number 24 of 2014, Seymour Library Tax Levy Advance. We have a sponsor.
Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Rosika.
Financial resolution number 24 of 2014, Seymour Library Tax Levy Advance. Whereas the Seymour Public Library District comprising the City of Auburn and the Town of Owasko was created by referendum on October 14, 1992, with the subsequent addition of the Auburn School District portion of the Town of Senate in January 1996, and the Town of Fleming in 2011. And whereas the share of the 2014 operating budget to be raised by the City of Auburn from a local assessment against the real property within the boundaries of the municipality would be $446,770.06. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Seymour Library, as in the past, has requested that the city advance one-half of the 2014-2015 tax levy in order that the library might meet its cash needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that the city manager is hereby authorized to make an advance of one-half of the 2014-2015 Seymour Library Tax Levy in the amount of $223,385.03, with said amount to be reimbursed from the proceeds of the levy at the time it is collected in July 2014.
Counselor Camardo.
John, just so that everybody knows, it's the Seymour Library itself, Board of Trustees, that sets the tax rate according to this here, correct? We have nothing to do with setting a rate. That's all we're doing is advancing half of the proceeds ahead of time.
Advance payment.
Okay. Just so folks understand what's happening with this resolution.
Yeah, and it comes from their board.
And currently, though, that rate is .46090 per thousand.
Any other discussion? Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Motion to approve financial resolution number 24 of 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Mayor, Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
Counsel resolution number 25 of 2014, Adoption of the CDBG Action Plan. We have a sponsor. Counselor Camardo, second by Counselor McCormick.
Counsel resolution number 25 of 2014, Approving the Submission of the 2014 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the City of Auburn is an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and it is required to submit a five-year consolidated plan with an annual statement of objectives and uses of the CDBG entitlement program funds. And whereas the City of Auburn in 2010 submitted the fourth consolidated planning strategy identifying the priorities of the CDBG program in the City of Auburn. And whereas the City of Auburn has prepared the fifth annual action plan outlining the community development activities, objectives, and budget for use of funds. And whereas the City of Auburn has held a public meeting to solicit participation and input into the preparation of the fourth annual action plan. And whereas the City of Auburn Planning Board held a public hearing in council chambers on December 3, 2013. And the City Council of the City of Auburn held a public hearing on January 30, 2014, during the public comment period. And whereas the City of Auburn published the notice of the fifth annual action plan on January 3, 2014, to start a 30-day local comment period. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York, that one, the City Council does hereby approve the fifth annual action plan for program year 2014 for the City of Auburn. And two, the City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the application for federal assistance and submit the fifth annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the CDBG entitlement program to complete the objectives of the fifth-year action plan. And three, the City Council does hereby authorize and direct the mayor to sign the funding approval agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development necessary to further the objectives of the fifth annual action plan and all related subrecipient and other agreements necessary to further the objectives of the fifth annual action plan. And four, the City Council does hereby authorize the city comptroller's office to recognize grant revenue and appropriate funding into the correct departmental budget.
Very good. Counselor Rosika, please.
Jenny, could you step up, please? Jenny, as of last week, we didn't really know what the funding level was going to be. Has anything changed there?
No. We're assuming that it's going to be around $814,000. We'll submit as soon as HUD gives us that final allocation amount over budgeting for. We continued to ask. They haven't told us exactly when. We're hoping within the next month or so that we'll know.
So what will be the mechanism you feel to amend your plan? Should the funding be significantly lower?
On page 31 of the plan, we talked about what we would do if, if the funding was higher, we would appropriate it to parks and playgrounds. If the funding is lower, we'd do a cut across all the budget lines.
Equally?
We would do a percentage cut across all the budget lines.
Okay. And also, again, it came out that nearly 51% of the city population, I think you said somewhere in the order of 50.9,
Yep.
is a low to moderate income level in the city.
Correct.
Which underscores why we're an entitlement community. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that this is the demographic here in the city. So, and this is why we're getting these plans, these funds.
And these funds have been in our community since 1974, either on a competitive or formula basis. It's done excellent work here.
Okay.
May I?
Counselor.
I have a question on that. That was brought up last week, the moderate to low income. Is that a median or is that the average? Someone tried to explain to me the difference between median and average.
Right. So low income is 50% of median family income for our community. And moderate income is less than 80% of median family income for our community. So the income guidelines that we showed last week, so for a family of four, any family that has a gross income of $50,000 or less would qualify for our programs.
That's.
And that's gross income, you know, before taxes are taken out.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Just, Counselor Camardo. Comment. Last week, we had a representative from the SCAP Van here.
Yes.
How'd we make out with that? Because they do an outstanding job in our community, and I was wondering if.
They absolutely do an outstanding job in our community, as the other subrecipients do. That portion of the budget, the human services portion, is capped. We are only allowed to spend 15% of our entitlement amount, and we have maxed that out. In order to provide more funding to the SCAP Van, we would have to cut other agencies in there. Our review committee spent many hours looking at all the applications and meeting with the SCAP Van and with the other agencies. And we would like to continue to stand by their recommendations and ask the council to stand by them as well. No disrespect to the SCAP Van or the other agencies, but 10 of the 12 agencies did take a cut already from where their funding levels were last year.
And who's on this review committee, Jenny?
They're a group of volunteers that we had asked to do, that I can get their names to you.
If you would, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you. Thank you for the hard work you do with this grant and these things.
Thanks, it's a great program.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Motion to approve counsel resolution number 25 of 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
Counsel resolution number 26 of 2014, Approving a Home Rule Message. Do we have a sponsor?
Counselor McCormick, second by Counselor Camardo.
Counsel resolution number 26 of 2014, Approving a Home Rule Message. Whereas the New York State Senate and Assembly had legislation introduced by Senator Nizolio and Assemblyman Finch whereby a law would be enacted allowing the City of Auburn to grant a preference to local businesses located in Keegah County and awarding city contracts for public works and purchases when such contracts do not exceed $100,000 and are within 5% of the lowest bid. And whereas before the legislation can be voted on by the New York State Senate and Assembly, there must be approved a home rule request by the Auburn City Council asking that the enactment of the special law granting a preference in awarding city contracts for public works and purchases, which is contained in Senate Bill S3300 and Assembly Bill A4476. And whereas the Auburn City Council believes that it will be in the best interest of local businesses if this law were enacted, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve a home rule request for enactment of a special law, specifically Senate Bill S3300 and Assembly Bill A4476, and authorizes the city manager to sign a home rule request as required by state law, and that the clerk certify the request and forward the documents to the New York State Senate and Assembly Home Rule Council.
Counselor Rosika.
Yes, this was pretty much championed by the past council members, Matt Smith and Bill Greeney. And to me, this is a very good program, or a very good rural, home rule message. I do believe that we should support our local contractors whenever possible. And of course, within this criteria here, I would certainly hope that we would see more local bids awarded.
Counselor McCormick.
Mayor, I was city clerk starting in 2000, and I believe this came before the council every year since the year 2000, and I wholeheartedly would support this.
Actually, I started in, I forgot what year I started, in 2008, seven or eight. And every year's come up before council, and it's been a unanimous vote in favor of it. So I cannot speak earlier than that, but I know it's been, it's been championed by councils all these years, so.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Motion to approve counsel resolution number 26 of 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
Counsel resolution number 27 of 2014, Adopting the Audit Report for the Year Ending June 30, 2013. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, second by Counselor McCormick.
Counsel resolution number 27 of 2014, Adopting the Audit Report for the Year Ended June 30, 2013. Whereas the City of Auburn is required by state and federal government regulations to conduct an audit of its finances annually, and the firm of Grossman-St. Amore, CPAs, PLLC, was engaged to conduct an audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. And whereas the audit firm issued a report and provided basic financial statements as well as a report on internal controls and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. And whereas the audit firm has provided a letter on required communications to the city council which sets forth significant accounting policies, accounting estimates, audit adjustments, consultations, and issues discussed prior to retention of the independent auditors. And whereas the audit firm has presented its findings to the Auburn City Council by means of a presentation to the council at the meeting of January 30, 2014, and it is now necessary that the council adopt the audit report. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby adopt the City of Auburn, New York Audit Report for the year ending June 30, 2013, prepared by Grossman-St. Amore CPAs in compliance with all governmental regulations.
Discussion.
Was there to be a comment period? Was there supposed to be a comment period on this?
Sorry?
A comment period.
Is there to be a comment, comment?
I think we separated the presentation from this meeting in the event that the council wanted to consider that.
All right, we'd like to, you know, it'd been just nice to have some of the public perhaps even weigh into it, but if that's not necessary.
We will post the final audit on the website if the council approves it tonight.
Okay.
Doug, I was just going to ask you about your schedule. There were some things recommended by the audit committee and the audit review that was completed. Are you going to come back to council with recommendations on how some of these things are being carried out? At least the recommendations that were made by both the audit committee and by the auditors themselves? So we could have a follow-up on that?
Yes.
And we're going to start working on a financial time schedule?
When the comptroller starts, we'll start working on the five-year plan.
Pardon me?
We'll start working on the five-year plan that was recommended.
Right. Our financial plan?
Yep.
You may want to add, I don't think you heard it, that there was no comptroller.
Once the comptroller starts in a couple of weeks.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Motion to approve counsel resolution number 27 of 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rosika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
Local laws?
No local laws.
Tabled legislation.
No tabled legislation.
Mr. Selby, reorganization?
Okay.
Discussion.
It's been on the agenda a few times, and started with the previous city council. The new council hasn't had the opportunity probably to weigh in on this. Tonight, we do have everybody. We've got the fire chief, and we've got Jenny, and we've got Brian Hicks here. They were lacking, the last two times we had this on the agenda. So I suggested we defer discussion until they were here. The concept simply is that we would move the function of codes enforcement from the Office of Planning and Economic Development to the Fire Department. The idea being that under the Fire Department, the firefighters would be able to undertake some level of code enforcement activities to supplement the staffing that we have now in the code office, which has been cut and is fairly limited at this point in time. That's kind of it in a nutshell. The cost impact would likely involve the cost of training for firefighters to some level of code enforcement, depending on what we would want them to do. Possibly the additional work that's generated by having more people in the field doing code enforcement might require that we need additional office support, which, as you all know, is lean at best today. So with that, I open up for discussion.
Counselor Camardo.
Doug, and members of council, I don't know how we can move ahead with this. I know we've been talking about it for a while. But it says in, under union contracts, "The discussion and ideas outlined above must be vetted with the fire union and CSCEA so that the contracts can be reviewed and determinations made as to whether items can or should be moved forward." So how do we move forward with something like this if it hasn't been vetted yet with those two bargaining units?
Well, I don't want to put words in the union's mouth, but I think they're waiting for us to say this is something we want to move forward with. And we haven't done that yet. They're aware, I sent them the memo that you have in your package.
The point I'm making here, if there's things that, there might be a financial burden to the city because of certain stipulations in both the fire and CSCEA contracts, how do we sit here and move forward with something if we don't know what the financial implications might be?
That's one of the issues.
Clearly. So you want to have discussion on whether to move forward, but I wouldn't be comfortable in voting on something this evening.
No, no, I'm not asking for a vote. This is just to discuss whether to bring it back at all, or whether the council wants to set it aside. It's an old matter that's been in front of the council and.
But some of these issues, I thought, would have been at least talked about with the different unions before it came back for discussion. And I'm kind of surprised that we've had this, at least six months ago, six, eight months ago, we've talked about this. ago, we've talked about this. I know we talked about it at budget time quite a bit, and I'm just, there's been no interaction on it whatsoever.
Well, during one of the sessions, one of the union presidents spoke on this with regard to some history that had transpired the last time this was brought up, so.
And just the second thing I'd like to know about is, I know one time during the budget discussions, there was some questions about if overtime would be incurred with the Fire Department if they took on these duties. Has that been looked at or not, or?
The idea would be to use their downtime, when they have downtime, to do things that are associated with, more with the code enforcement for grass and things like that, as opposed to actual building inspections and the kind of things that our other code enforcement officers are more highly trained for.
And just the last point, I think these are things we got to look at unfortunately about how we can reorganize our departments for efficiency and better turnaround time for the general public. But the next thing I was wondering is why wouldn't it be a good idea to house the code enforcement at the Fire Department when you're talking about having firemen going out and do code enforcement with the citizens of this community so that they're there, so that when people go down and they have questions, some of the firemen are on staff that they can answer some of these questions. I know what you talked about, what there is not parking. There is parking on Market Street, and maybe we could take a couple of those metered spots and reserve them for, you know, visitor, or visitor or city business that could be taken on there, not have metered parking and a couple of those spots there so that people can access and have everybody available. And I always thought that it would be a good idea, maybe we could use some of the staff at the Fire Department to make sure that the offices open every day. You've heard me say this many times. I just, I can't believe that we have an important area like this of codes and it's only open two days a week. So I've had that problem for a considerable amount of time since the budget, and I think we need to move in an area where we can have that accessible five days a week with, during business hours. So those are the three concerns I had.
Counselor Ruzika.
I've got to agree, if we can take advantage of some downtime here and provide service to the public as far as codes enforcement and asking any related questions to, to the enforcement, I think it's a, it's a great idea to have this, it's, there's, it's all on downtime, or majoritarily it'll be on downtime if it's a fireman doing it, so I don't see a problem with it.
Counselor.
Just wanted to ask, just whatever way we go, it'd take quite a while to iron everything out, whichever way. The issue that Counselor Camardo brought up about the Code Office right now not being opened, I'm hoping there's some way we could open that sooner than later, given the, the report we had last week with the income going up. It would really be great if we could find a way to open that office immediately, five days a week. I think that would be better than waiting until we figure out who goes where.
Counselor Ruzika.
Doug, isn't that software supposed to take care of and automate some of the more routine things like, you know, some permitting? Wasn't that the intention?
It will, it will, it will take some of the paper flow out of the, out of the situation. We don't think it's going to allow us to downsize our staff at all, but it will allow them to be more productive in maybe working the counter and doing things like that.
Well, I, the intention that I thought was that these would be basically filed online, and if they're very routine or whatever, it would be somewhat of an automated permit, you know, for, that would be awarded once the criteria was met, things like that.
There's still, there's still have to be somebody on the other end receiving the permit, reviewing it, approving it, and emailing it back or responding.
But even if the office isn't open for service, isn't someone in that office?
Yeah, this is something that could happen even if the window was closed.
Anyone else? Counselor, in regards to your first question, I don't want to answer it for Mr. Selby, but the way I look at it is, we're kind of at a stalemate. The firefighters' union and the CSCEA union are looking to see what our move is, and we don't want to make a move because we're not sure amongst ourselves how we want to go. So I think Mr. Selby is looking for some direction, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Selby, but I think he's looking for some direction as to which way we should be moving, so then the, both unions can, can decide whether this is going to be a concern, a problem or not.
I understand, but I think we gave him direction back at budget time, if I'm not mistaken, that that was the way we wanted to move with consolidation of some of the services so we could be more efficient and effective. I remember those, those conversations, quite frankly.
But now we have to expand a little bit, is to just saying we're going to, we're going to combine these two, but okay, so what are the meat and potatoes here? How are we going to combine?
I just, I just like to know the financial implications that we're going to have if we do move forward with those.
I'm not taking you to task, I'm just, what's on my mind. Counselor Cuddy.
Based on Counselor McCormick's assessment of the, the work we got last week, and the fact that there may be some, maybe a money generator, I would consider opening up, back up five days a week. While we consider whether it's going to be run under the Office of Planning or the Fire Department, I still think we should take advantage, if something is trending towards, you know, bringing money into the city, I think we should support that while we figure out where the final residence or final, you know, oversight is going to be.
Counselor McCormick.
This is a, I'm not sure if it's a question or a, you decide. Could we put it kind of on, on hold or whatever as you talk with, start, I know we're going to be working with the CSCEA pretty soon on negotiating and talk about, there's got to be some flexibility as far as how we do things. Is that helpful, or would that be possible?
It would be. I, I guess I'm thinking of this as one of those things that we're not going to be able to come to the council and say, hey, guess what, this is going to save us $100,000 a year. It's not a big financial issue, but it might be an issue of improving our ability to use some of our human resources to do a little bit more work than we do today.
More efficient?
Yeah.
And more practical than, I think, I've found, working here, some of the, I don't know if it's the job descriptions or positions are focused as they were 30 years ago to do one thing, and it really is hard to work and be flexible when a job description is so rigid. And I think if there's a way to work that out so that they could have, something could be done to make more of the positions more responsibility, more flexible, or I don't know if that's, I know it's a combination, civil service and, and CSCEA things and all that, but maybe it can work in concert as you're changing things, I don't know. I'm done.
Counselor Ruzika.
Doug, it is already currently in the description for the duties of, of the Fire Department, so I don't see why we just don't put it forth and put it out there and move, say that this is the direction we want to move. I mean, obviously, it's going to engage some more personnel, take, take some, you know, take advantage of what would be otherwise downtime. I, I don't see where it's anything but a win-win.
This action would require a resolution of the council, so, you know, that, that's one reason, you know, it hasn't moved forward, is because I'm waiting for direction to bring a resolution forward and move it on, or, or kill it.
So counsel, having said that, Mr. Selby, is there support on the council to bring forward a resolution? I know this isn't a formal vote, but I guess the...
Going towards this. I would like to, to just consider, just stay on it just for a little, little bit longer, maybe like one or two weeks, and then have a resolution drafted once, you know, once time passes, I think, but I'm leaning more towards a resolution.
Counselor Ruzika, I take it that you're in favor of it?
I'm in favor, and I don't think we need to wait two weeks. It's, I don't see a need to wait.
Counselor McCormick.
I agree that we need to make changes and streamline and be more efficient. I know there's urgency to increasing revenue. I don't know if it's, if we're going to do a strategic plan and do all this, is it just pulling something out? I don't know, I'd have to, I didn't, I know I was here for all the presentations, but I didn't, wasn't sitting in that seat thinking I'm going to make a decision.
You weren't under the gun.
I know. I wasn't going to make a decision. I haven't really, I don't know about Counselor Cuddy, but we haven't really seen a presentation of the pros and the cons from all the people involved.
I think that that would help because based on just conversations with various interested parties, it's ambiguous as this conversation is right now.
It is.
I think maybe a presentation of the, the benefits and the costs from each, each department from planning and, and the Fire Department, because I know there's pros and cons based on the conversations we've had, but I, I don't think it's something I want to spring on them tonight.
Right.
But maybe going forward with some kind of, you know, like what Mike did with scenarios, what would the scenario be like if, if planning continued and we opened up for five days a week? And if, what would it look like if the Fire Department took over? You know, so if that would be amenable to, to Mr. Selby and Jenny and...
Whatever helps you make a decision, it's fine with me.
Mr. Selby, if I could make a, go ahead, counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, what I would think is if, if it's moved to the, to the Fire Department and we're taking advantage of downtime, that counter would be serviced five, five days a week. So again, taking advantage of downtime and making for more efficient use of personnel. It's, it's almost a no-brainer.
Mayor?
Counselor.
Just, I understand what you're saying about efficiency and, but to, to have someone wait on a counter, that should be a clerk or a count clerk. I don't see a firefighter at this training and the salaries, waiting on people at the counter is a, is a waste of a resource, I would think.
That will, counsel, nothing wrong with that, will be a big, I'm sure, I can't speak for the CSCEA, but that will be a big objection.
Yeah.
Because you're taking work away from them, so.
Counselor Cuddy. I was always under the assumption that even if the Fire Department did take on some of the inspection roles, that the, still the, the physical office where people would, would interact with codes would, would be in City Hall. So I always thought that that was actually still part of the...
I did too.
Plan regardless of the planning or the Fire Department had oversight.
My suggestion, and I'm just making it out loud, is within two weeks, if we have a presentation exactly how it's expected to, to, to work, how it's supposed, who's going to do what, how they're going to do it, and then two, within two weeks after that, come to a formal vote for council.
Sounds good.
But, you know, it's, we have CSCEA, we have the firefighters' union, we certainly don't want to get any of us in a grievous situation, we want to protect everyone's job the best we can. It is to streamline it, but I think all the pros and cons have to be on the table, so.
We could invite the CSCEA and somebody from the Fire Department Union to participate in that discussion also.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be very helpful.
It's clear as mud to you, right?
I got it.
I got it. Thanks. Let's back up, what do we have here?
Mayor, if I may, one, one other reorganization item. In the parking enforcement arena, I think we need better supervision over our parking officers. If you recall, when we did the parking shuffle and things moved to different departments, at a, when the police department left that area of business, it kind of moved to DPW. DPW doesn't really have the resources to stay on top of what's going on with the regard of writing tickets and the meters and so forth. I've talked to Chief Nagel, he's willing to take on those two part-time employees in an effort to see if we can improve the revenue generation. We're, we're down in terms of revenue from where we were two years ago, and yet we have increased parking rates by 50%. So we need really to be attentive to what's going on on the streets, and I think with Mike's limited staff, it's very difficult for, for him to take that on and make sure those guys are being as productive as they can be. In addition, we've had some downtime with some kiosks which have, I think, timed out in terms of technology. We're finding it difficult to replace them, so that's had an impact on revenues as well. But I think in addition to that, it's just, you know, without some oversight, supervision and, and direction, our guys are kind of doing the best they can, but not being as productive as we probably could make them.
Counselor.
Doug, are the, the kiosks no longer supported by the manufacturer?
I, I understand we're having a hard time finding, finding parts that...
It's obsolescence issue?
They were kind of, I guess, on the trailing edge of the technology that was coming out at the time, so they're over 10 years old, I understand.
And obviously, the replacement value at cost would be what?
We don't have a number. I've asked Bob Guth here to see what, what it would cost, so. So, yeah, that, that would be a cost impact, but on the other hand, it does generate revenue, and they're, they're very important for that purpose.
Counselor Cuddy. On that note, I just wanted to, so right now it's, parking is under DPW, is that correct?
It's scattered. The Treasurers Office handles a lot of it in terms of the collections, you know, once the money's collected and so forth. DPW has the parking garage and the staff there, as well as the on-street parking enforcement people, with the exception of a nighttime person who does alternate site parking, who's reporting to the police department.
Okay.
So I would like to consolidate the enforcement, the street enforcement.
Also on this, you know, I had a conversation the other day and, and about parking and, as parking can be an issue in Auburn, particularly downtown and availability, I'm interested in trying to come up with ways to, to make the parking more efficient for the kinds of businesses that are, that are, that are there, and how we can perhaps use signage for those that want to use the services downtown, if they're going to be there for longer than an hour and a half, two hours, make sure that they get, get to the parking garage, make sure the rates are consistent, and then maybe having, encouraging shorter terms in front of businesses that only have, that have a quick turnaround time. So I'm interested in seeing between planning and between, you know, the departments coming up with some kind of mechanism or maybe even a commission to, to really come up with some, some ways in which we can really address the parking, the signage, and the flow of people and traffic in and out of our downtown area.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else on our other business, counsel of your own? Counselor Camardo?
Just two things. Doug, with the replacement of the water meters, this Inline company that's here doing the water meters, they're under, I guess Wendell hired them, is that, is that how it worked out?
Yes.
Now, who's following up to make sure that they're following through on all the provisions of the contract and so on and so forth, so that people are getting treated fairly and so on and so forth? And, you know, are you doing that, or is somebody on staff doing that, or?
I'm involved from time to time. It's, it's an engineering department contract.
So we've had, we had a couple of meetings with Inline and Wendell regarding some of
the, the issues that have occurred in the field, and they've been fairly responsive. There's an ad in the paper recently explaining what's going on. We've developed a handout for them to give rather than them, because they've been counseled as to what to say to a homeowner, for example, if their service is in such condition that they don't want to try to replace the meter for fear of damaging it. We've had some issues with the way that was reported to the homeowner, so we've got a checklist, and it'll be left with the homeowner, and they'll be basically advised, you know, we couldn't do a, a meter replacement for one of four different reasons, and one of those reasons would require that the homeowner consult with the plumber because of the condition of their lateral.
So they don't touch the meter unless, if they are realizing that there might be a problem with the...
Right.
...water line coming into the home?
Right, they're, they're being very careful about that. Now, there's been an impact to our crews because our...
Now, there's been an impact to our crews because our crews are the ones that will put the key on the curb stop in areas where they can't get a good shut-off in the house and we've been limited in our ability to do that, do a number of main breaks and issues that take Tom Gabeck's crew away from that.
Shouldn't some of these be done during the summertime? Why is the winter, I, I'm under the understanding a lot of this stuff happens during the winter when things are fragile because of the cold weather we had and things, so on and so forth, is that a problem that's been existing or no?
Well, with the meters being inside it-
I'm talking about the shut-offs outside too, some of the shut-offs.
I think that might be an issue in terms of finding them under the snow sometimes.
And shutting them off and so on and so forth.
But we only do that on galvanized services. If it's copper service, those tend to be in very good shape and those can be taken care of by that company by themselves.
Now, the other question I had about Wendell, is some, I guess Bill Lupien's following up on where lights are being replaced and so on and so forth.
Yes.
We're talking about efficiency and replacing lighting and so on and so forth. Somebody had mentioned at the sewage treatment plant, some of the lights that were taken down because of ice issues. These companies went in and put lights up now where there was pending problems with ice, that's why they replaced the lights. So I think we should have some follow-up on what they're actually doing with some of these things that they're trying to find cost savings for.
We can give you a report.
If you would. And the second issue I had is, wrote up Franklin Street the other day, is there, is there a possibility we could get the contractor to start filling some of the potholes and addressing some of the problems that are on Franklin Street? It's, because settling and so on and so forth with the way the weather has been going, it would strongly need some attention and quick attention. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Counselor Aziza.
Since we had a discussion on InLine, got a few complaints that InLine performing the service broke shut-offs, basically the curb stops, replace the meter, then turn it back on and leave, and the homeowner comes back and finds that water's rushing into the location where the meter is. At that point, who's responsible? I mean, it was fine before, they're allegedly, you just said that they were examining, they were making determinations of whether or not it was feasible to turn them on and off, yet we have some that are being broken and, and people are now responsible to replace that curb stop after the meter had been replaced.
The curb stops are only operated by city employees, so a city employee would have turned the curb stop and if there was damage, it was a result of our operations, not InLine. InLine will turn the valves inside the house, the house shut off. And again, they're very cautious, if it's galvanized pipe, that's when they want a city guy out on the curb stop to turn that off in the event the, they have a problem inside.
Okay. But then again, you know, if, if these are being broken during service, obviously the homeowner's saying, well, it was fine before you got here.
We, we had one that was broken during an installation and we stepped up and took care of that out of the contingency. Otherwise, we're just trying to avoid the ones that are susceptible to damage and, and we have, some of the cards on these show that they were installed in the, they're 100 years old basically and they're going to probably fail at some point in the near future anyway, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, you know, the homeowner's gonna say, it was fine until you touched it.
Yes, exactly.
So they have been, InLine has been saying we won't touch this just because it's-
Yeah, we're, we've asked them to pass over those, log them, and we've got to figure out a way to come back and, and do that. Part of this program is to automate the meter reading so we can have a reader on a garbage truck. We don't have to have somebody driving around and getting out and touchpad anymore. So the quicker we get all the meters converted, the more efficient we'll be at meter reading. So it's important we get it, get all of them eventually.
On a personal note, they were at my house last week and luckily I had a copper pipe and they were in and out in about 15 minutes, so, but I was ready, taking notes. So, but I did, I've had a constituent call me about their experience, it seemed similar, but they were, they were, as Counselor Camardo, just, just kinda was wondering, you know, you know, who InLine was and I explained to them the, the current contract that we have. But, but yeah, so, so far the, the experience I've had has been okay, but I imagine, you know, with some of these, some of the more, the older lines, it might, might come across some, some issues.
I mentioned a family member with the water line, the InLine went down the basement, took a look, it was even quicker than your house, Counsel, went down, took a look, said they can't touch it because it's, it's that old and they, they walked out and said, you have to have your line replaced, so.
Well, they did actually get, get the change.
Yeah, no, no, I realize that, so.
Anything else?
Are we under recap or this other business?
This under other business, Counsel.
Last thing is, I seen Frank's in the office and, or in the audience, I should say. If, if I could ask you a question here, Frank? Frank DeRosa. Okay, and one of your recommendations, it was recommended that your first step was to start a financial review board. I'm sure that you fully support that as, as a first step item. Do you have an idea of how you envision that being, I guess, made up of? And do you still agree that it's one of the first things we need to do?
Counsel, I want to interrupt one second. That's a city manager's job and I think the city manager should work with Mr. DeRosa if he so desires. By all means, ask Mr. DeRosa your question, but we're not taking powers away from our city manager.
Well, that was my question, what, what do you feel? Is it, what do you envision the makeup being?
It's immaterial what he feels, it's a city manager's obligation to work on the financial-
I'm asking an expert.
Mr. Selby is an expert.
Mr. DeRosa, please.
I'm happy to, to answer your question. It's directly in relationship to the Audit Committee's recommendation, so as long as the rest of the council doesn't mind, I'm happy to answer that. I believe that the makeup of that committee should obviously be individuals with financial background. We've tossed around the idea before that it would be nice to have several individuals on that committee, a banker, an accountant from private industry, as Patrick Factow was, a, a commercial real estate agent. But I believe that you really should have a good representation from different disciplines in the community, from business, industry and also from academia, because I really believe that putting together a five-year plan is quite a task and it's, it's gonna take some time and hopefully you'll be able to find other individuals from the community that would be happy to devote their time to it. But I think it's definitely a priority issue and I know I've talked to Manager Selby and he feels the, he feels the same way. I guess coming from the business community myself, we always feel that things move slower in government and especially under the situation that you have, I believe you're understaffed already, which I believe is another reason that you need such a, a committee on the outside to basically give recommendations and just offer assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. No recap?
Yes, I'd like to know what the status of all the recap items are. We have, I'm sure a number of, that you have on your list that-
There were none last week and the one, the previous week was, that didn't get addressed, was the issue of the recap items. So I talked to, to Mr. Mason, we're working on the best way to format that.
Okay. I just, some of those I think are, are important and I don't want to see them fall off the edge.
Counsel, is that in the form of a, an item for the recap or just?
Yes, yes, a recap on the recap items.
All right, okay. I believe that was the only request then for a recap this week. Okay. Do I request for executive session?
I do.
In regards to-
A personnel issue and to negotiations.
Very good. I'd like to add a personnel issue also to that. This time entertain a motion for executive session. Counselor Camardo seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Clerk, if you call the role for executive session.
Motion to enter into executive session. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Aziza?
Yes.
Aye, we'll be in recess for executive session.